You're watching the Mobile City Council Candidate Forum for District One, live from the WKRG News 5 studio.
Hello everyone and welcome to tonight's City Council District One Forum. I'm Peter Albrecht. Seven candidates are running for the seat that has been held for the last 25 years by Fred Richardson. Richardson is running for mayor this year. District One encompasses much of the north side of the city of Mobile, including neighborhoods like Tolmanville, Trinity Gardens, parts of Midtown, and the Wolf Ridge Road area as well. The candidates tonight are in alphabetical order. Perry Barons as a community and environmental activist. Tim Hollis describes himself as a community champion. Cory Penn is the Kuwanas Club branch director. Herman Thomas, a community organizer. Shamine Fortune Thompson is a community organizer and facility supervisor for the city of Mobile. And Tony Tony Wright is a former local basketball star. John Westbrook had a previous commitment tonight and could not attend the forum. The candidates do not know the questions that will be asked tonight. They will have anywhere from 15 to 45 seconds for their answers depending on the question. If the candidates run long, I'll be forced to cut them off mid-answer. There will be no rebuttals tonight. Please stick to the questions being asked. The order of the candidates to answer will be rotated. And at the end tonight, the candidates will be allowed to make a closing statement. So we will begin now with our first question tonight, candidates, and we're going to focus at the beginning here on public safety. Mobile is on pace this year to have the highest number of murders in a decade. Many of these crimes are being committed by teenagers. What can be done from a city standpoint to address this problem? You'll have 45 seconds for this, and we're going to begin with Perry.
Thank you. Forty-five seconds to address an issue that really can't be addressed that quickly. However, it starts with community image changing and grassroots groups getting together to focus on working with youth that are at risk. Programs such as AA, Boys and Girls Clubs, various things of that nature. Start them young. Stop the revolving door at the city jails. The officers need more money so they're not always tired and agitated. And I think this also causes a rift between the police and the citizens. So we need to work on both sides of the issue, the police and the children. But start when they're young.
All right. Thank you so much, Perry. Tim?
Okay, so when you really look at where the violent crimes are occurring, they're mostly occurring in areas of low income. So how do you solve that problem? You bring things that bring hope, happiness, and cheer to the community. Look at your house pet. If you feed it and take care of it, it'll mind you, it'll be good. If you run it astray and you starve it, it's going to defend itself and become wild. And that's what we have going on in our communities now. So we need to invest in the children at their earlier stages, and that way the policing won't really be a problem then.
All right. Thanks so much. Cory, you're next.
Safer streets is one of my major platform points. As a director of the Boys and Girls Club and been a student pastor for the past nine years, I've been working with youth in our community for many years. I have created programs to help youth get off the streets like American Sign Language, Character and Leadership programs, and we need more programs in our community and our city, not just in one area, but in all areas. So as the councilman for District One, I will make sure that our young people have the programs they deserve and the resources they need.
All right. Herman?
We have to give young people opportunities, give them things that they can enjoy, things that can motivate them. We have to give them opportunities where they can see what their future will hold. But while we must also deal with the problems with the teenagers, we must also start working with the younger students as well. It's extremely important that we instill in them the importance of education. One of the programs I started over, that was in operation for 10 years, was the Phoenix Program, which directly dealt with the high school graduation rate, and it was recognized by the Department of Education as one of the best programs in the country. We need more programs to focus on education.
All right. Thanks Herman. Shamine?
The crime that we're seeing today statistically in our city is between the ages of 18 and 25. We have to get our police officers back into our neighborhoods by reinstating our weed and seed program, and that is something that I would like to do, as well as reinstating the neighborhood enhancement program. These are things that I will work on, as well as implement a program called PALS, and that is Police Activities and Athletics League. And that will have our police officers actually working in our communities, serving our children, serving our youth, and just building that community policing relationship again.
All right. Tony Tony?
Okay, we got to provide the kids free after-school programs that will connect them to different resources. Different resources like educating them, okay? Putting them in programs that will keep them active throughout the summertime, after-school, making sure they're not involved in the streets. Next, we got to bring the police into the community. Provide games, basketball, kickball, softball, have cookouts where the kids and the police can have a good time together. Also, we got to connect them with more resources, not just the school system. We need to have more resources so they can have more time to do things.
All right. Thanks. Now to our next question. Starting in 2015, Mobile purchased 500 body cameras for police officers, yet earlier this year, there were two deadly police shootings, and in neither case was the officer involved wearing a camera. The city has since purchased 300 more cameras in the name of transparency, and yet the police department will not make any of the video available to the general public or the media. What would you recommend be the rules for the wearing of police body cameras and the availability of the video? Tim, you go first.
Well, it's already present in the fact that I, Tim Hollis, have been active on that same issue with the police body cameras. As you all may know, I represented the Moore family when the Michael Moore incidents happened. That's when we started the demand for body cameras. Last year, at the old Admiral Sims Landmark, a police responded to the scene, and he was being very rude to the suspects out there and the citizens. We asked him about a body cam. He said he doesn't have to wear a body cam. So we carried that fight back to the city council tables, and we're still pushing this fight to make sure that all police on duty, whether at a desk or in the field, has on a body camera, because you're dealing with people whether you're in the offices or whether you're in the streets. And you should make that available to our police advisory crew.
All right. Thanks, Tim. And I failed to mention, this is a 45-second question. Cory, you're next.
Yes, as the councilman, we have to understand that we are the legislative branch of the city government. And so we have ordinance that we have to pass. And one of the things that I will focus on is making sure that the ordinance or ordinance are being implemented, making sure that all police officers are wearing their body cameras. It's a must. It's about accountability. We want our communities to be safe. We want our citizens to feel safe, and that's why I want to create the PAC, Police and Citizens Working Together. And by doing that, we're going to create trust in our community, and we'll be able to create change as well.
All right. Herman?
All police officers should have body cameras, and they should be activated once there's interaction with the public. Transparency should be present. The facts would not change if the film is released early or late, so the film should be released immediately.
All right. Shamine?
It's important that body cameras be worn for us to be transparent. It is imperative that we make sure that videos are available when necessary. It's also important that we ensure that our police officers have their body cameras on at all times when out in the public, and that they are participating in trainings, trainings such as implicit bias trainings, trainings as far as making sure that they are being accountable for their actions. So that's one thing that we have to do, make sure that it's always accessible and that we are always open to the public and the people.
All right. Tony Tony, your thoughts on police body cameras?
Yeah, we definitely have to create that transparency, and no doubt about it. We have to demand the law department to make the police wear the body cameras, just that simple. Everyone has to be held accountable. That's it. It's just that simple.
All right. And Perry?
Just to add to what everybody said, it would be a repeat, but definitely being in the news publishing business before and feeling the frustration of not being able to get what's a public media, that I'm against. The media should always be informed of anything that they get that's public funds are spent on. And so the whole tape would be viewed so that both sides of the story would get out, the police officer and the arresting person, whatever it was, that both sides got to be heard. So it didn't become just a weapon for a different group to get a position that would hold an advantage and make the officer look bad or the victim look bad. So as long as it's fair, that's the media's job and the police together to ensure that it comes out truthful.
All right. Go on to our next question now, which involves homelessness in Mobile. Mobile has a significant homeless population, especially downtown. People who have invested in downtown businesses complain that the homeless scare away customers and hurt their bottom line. In recent years, homeless individuals have been arrested for sexual assaults and other serious crimes. What should the city's approach be when it comes to dealing with homelessness? And Cory, you go first. This is 30 seconds for your answer, please.
That's a great question. In District One, going down Mafia Road, we have a challenge with people that are dealing with issues and things in their life, and now they are homeless. I think we have to create programs for these people. I think that a lot of times that people fall down on hard challenges, and we have to be there as a community to lift them up. So my goal is to create some programs to make sure that they're able to get a job, have a place to stay, get food, get all the resources they need. And I think by doing that, we will see change in our district as well as in our city.
All right. Herman?
It is a serious problem, and I think we should address that problem by dealing more with some mental health issues and social services type programs. We need teams to work along with our first responders to identify the homeless people, the homeless population, the resources they need, and provide them what they need in order to make them productive citizens.
All right. Shamine?
We have to treat the homeless as though they're people. And with that being said, we need to make sure that we are allocating funds to ensure that there is some kind of way we can put programming together, housing together. You're homeless because you don't have housing. So we need to make sure that we have adequate housing and opportunities to assist these people in getting on their feet.
All right. Tony Tony?
Well, this is a hands-on question for me. I actually worked at Housing First when we helped homeless find homes before I pursued a career in basketball. Really, most people just didn't know that these resources was available. So we had to reach out, expand this program, and reach out to those people who's out there, educate them that there are resources available for them.
All right. And Perry?
Working with homeless myself, first place, organizations like that to give them shelter with, you know, responsibility to be in that shelter, and then offering programs for help throughout the shelter's work. And that seems to be the best avenue, not really, I don't think the government can really stop homelessness, because once you've been homeless for several years, you really don't want to be in a home. And so getting them in shelter long enough to where they can feel comfortable enough that they do want a home, that's where the work is, because they stay and then they go back.
I'm sorry, we're over our time there. Tim?
Okay, so we can look at what other cities are already doing. In San Antonio, Texas, the city and the city council got together and they bought an old abandoned hotel, and they turned that place into a homeless shelter. Our city has $130-plus million in the surplus. I'm sure we could find money to do the exact same thing there. If you look overseas in Europe, they have what they have called homeless pods, where they have an agency that goes around and supplies the homeless pods. And it's like the homeless can check into these places every day or every night, and they're being monitored, and someone goes and checks them out.
Okay, we're going to move on to our next topic, which is annexation. In 2019, for the first time ever, the city council voted against allowing about 13,000 people living west of the city to vote on annexing into Mobile. The majority of those residents in that area in question are white. The vote against annexation was on strictly racial lines with our current city council. Simple question, do you favor the annexation of this group? And Herman, you go first.
The annexation is an important issue, and we must address that. I think the issues that faced the current council, they did not sit down and discuss things. I think my skills as a judicial officer and a mediator will be a skill set that can be used to help. The city will grow, the city needs to grow, but the concerns that was raised by some of the council members are legitimate concerns that must be answered.
Okay, and again, 45 seconds for this one. You're allowed up too. And Shamine, you're next.
I am pro-growth, and I believe that we have to put a plan in place. And so after careful research and planning, we need to do that first, and once we do that, we'll see. And whatever is best for the citizens of Mobile is what we need to do.
Tony Tony?
Yeah, no, I do not support it. I need to be, we have to be more educated on what the annexation is for everybody so we can have a clear understanding, create that transparency. But as of now, I do not support it.
Okay. Perry, you're next.
I don't support annexation either. We've got enough to do right here in our local area to add all the extra services we'd need to provide, so I'm against annexation of that area.
All right. Tim?
I support annexation, but I'm gonna make it clear, and I'm gonna make it plain. I would not make that decision without consulting with residents in District One first, because as a representative, I represent them. And if we're meeting with another part of Mobile County to see if they want to incorporate, I think we owe our citizens that same respect to see if they even want the same incorporation, because we're not up here making decisions for ourselves, we're making decisions for the people.
All right. And Cory?
Yes, I'm for anything that grows our city, that's building our city. We got to understand the difference also between residential value and commercial value. So I think we also got to look at the issue, the quality of life in the city of Mobile. People are moving out our city, and so we have to build our quality of life to get people moving back. So we got to create a plan, and we got to make sure that we have all the resources needed to take care of all the things in our city and community.
All right. Our next topic is the supermajority. Mobile's government is set up so that a supermajority, five of seven votes, are needed to pass most council business. The system was established to protect African-American rights with four of seven districts being majority white. After the 2020 census, however, when the districts are redrawn next year, four districts might have a majority of black voters. So should the supermajority remain in place? And Shamine, you're first.
I do believe that the supermajority needs to stay in place. This is a law. This law has been in place for years, and I am for always sticking with the laws.
Okay. Tony Tony?
Yes, I think the supermajority should stay. Let's not change it when the demographic has started to change. Let's see how it works with the black being the majority, and then we'll go from there.
All right. And we're on to Perry.
I'm into keeping it like it is too, and that's due to gentrification and moving people around doesn't work, it just makes people angry. So yeah, I vote for keeping it like it is so that it stays as a voting block.
All right. Tim, your thoughts on the supermajority?
It needs to stay.
All right. Cory?
I'm for a supermajority.
All right. And finally Herman?
I'm in favor of maintaining the supermajority. The intent behind the supermajority in the ZOGB Act was to force people or require people to sit down to talk, to discuss things for the betterment of the entire community. And I think it has worked well in the past, and it needs to continue.
All right. Our next question, 30 seconds to answer this one. We're talking about inclusion and diversity. Has the current administration done an adequate job of representing the diversity of the city in its appointed positions? Tony Tony, you're first.
Historically, I'm gonna say no, but we're all progressing towards a new city and a new demographic is beginning to become the majority, so I do see a difference coming soon.
All right. Perry?
Yes, I'd say he's done a good job of representing, you know, all people pretty much equal. He's made some real big improvements compared to the past administration. And as a city council member, I'd look forward to working with the board, with what's moving forward in Mobile right now. But I think he's set a tone for the city that's pretty good. Needs some change, but it's pretty good.
Okay. Tim?
Well, it looks good on the front, but everything in that glitter isn't gold. There are various inconsistencies with how this current administration does operate, but I will say for the statement of the question, it looks good.
Okay. Cory?
I believe that diversity and inclusion is important for the city, especially when you look at the makeup of our city. I think we're progressing in the right way, but anything, always, we can get better. And so as the city councilman, my job is to help create a better Mobile.
Okay. Herman?
I think all the boards, commissions, panels, and administrative positions should reflect the diversity of the city, and I think we need to look at a lot of the planning commission type appointments and things of those nature, because I think they should do, we can do a better job of reflecting the true diversity of our city.
Okay. And Shamine?
Well, diversity and inclusion is not just race, it's not just a gender, it's all types of disparities. And so it's important that we make sure that all type of disparities are being addressed, and they are being seen as a woman. And to see our council, our city council, if we look at the makeup right now, we had two women, one has left. And so it's important that on this council, that we have diversity and inclusion when it comes to minority women and women of color. So it's important that we work a little more on ensuring that all voices are heard.
Okay. We're going to talk now about the capital improvement plan. It uses money from the penny sales tax, and it divides it evenly among the seven districts for infrastructure projects. Is this fair for the older parts of the city, and what changes, if any, would you make to this arrangement? Tony Tony, you're first.
I don't think I would make any changes. I would just make sure I allocate the funds to certain areas I think is important.
Okay, we're a little trouble with your mic, Tony Tony. We're going to move on, we'll come back to you, give you another chance to answer that while we work on your microphone situation. We're working back this way. Now, Shamine, you're next.
Could you repeat that question?
Okay, we're just going to pause for a second here. We're having a little trouble with our audio. All right, we got them back, so we're going to start over. Apologize for that. Again, the question is about the CIP, which uses that penny sales tax money, divides it evenly among the seven districts, and the question is, do we need to make changes on this? Is it fair to the older part of town, which might have more pressing infrastructure needs? Tony Tony, you're first. And this is 45 seconds. I apologize.
Yes, I would not make a change to it, but I mean, like you said, we can do, we can improve on things. So I would see what the funds have been allocated to previously, and then determine its significance.
Okay. Shamine?
In regards to the capital improvement funds, I feel like we can stay where we are. However, we need to make sure that we're working together as a council, and we know those areas that need a little more tender love and care. And so as we work together to ensure that everyone has good quality of life, regardless of what area they live in, I'm sure that we will be able to get some grants, some other resources, some private, public, private funding, anything to make sure that the areas that really need that tender love and care, that we make sure that they get what they need as well.
Herman?
The current distribution of the CIP plan, I think is appropriate, and I think there are other resources available, because we do need to deal with some of the needs in some of the northern parts of the city. And I think we need a strategic and strategic plan and a master plan to deal with some of these concerns. And I think that's one of the things that's currently lacking, and I think that will be one of my major priorities, to try to deal with some of the shortfalls facing the north side, and at the same time, maintain the current distribution of the CIP funds.
Okay. Cory, you're next.
Yes, I believe that we should definitely maintain the current CIP plan in place, but I believe as well as we have other resources that we can utilize, like grants for our older parts of the city, as well as being an advocate to our community with the administration to hopefully they can add some more funds in the budget.
And Tim?
Yes, the CIP does need to stay in place. I mean, you break it down between seven districts, they get $21 million grossed back from the penny tax, and that breaks it down to $3 million per district. And so $3 million per district really isn't a lot. I mean, right now, at Figures Park, they're spending almost $800,000 to do upgrades there. So that's a chunk of $3 million missing. So let's keep it there, find more grants, and get more engaged.
All right. Perry?
This is more where I'm, why I joined up on this, is that the map of Mobile can't even begin to become a reality unless we get a good foundation, which is drainage. And instead of band-aiding it like they're currently doing, $17 billion, million dollars on the Broad Street, we need to take the five corridors, do one at a time, so that we can move forward without interruption for public transportation, sidewalks, the whole bit. As is, if we keep band-aiding it, we're never going to be able to get anything done that matches the map of Mobile. So my plan is to get in and work with the mapping, work with a grid system that allows, whether it's the old part or not, everything's done in a plan, so it's progress towards everything that's in the map of Mobile, so that we can achieve public transportation, walkways, bike paths, safer streets.
Okay, we're moving on to the next question, which involves city employee pay raises. During the COVID pandemic, no city employee missed a paycheck. Mayor Stimson has proposed giving city employees a $5,000 bonus out of the city's CARES Act money. Do you agree, or should the funds go to others more impacted by the pandemic? Shamine, you're first.
I do agree. As a city employee, I know that many of us, we are essential workers. We did not go home. So it is important that not only we get the $5,000, but we begin to actually put effort into paying our workers. If we pay our workers, our city workers, we'll be able to keep them on board. So I do agree. I thank you.
Okay. 30 seconds to answer this one. Herman, you're next.
Currently, the ZOGB Act requires that all revenue funding sources come from the mayor's office, so those, the initial budget must come from the mayor's office. But I think what we should do as a city and as a community, before we spend those funds, we need to have more community meetings throughout the entire city to get some input from all the residents.
All right. Cory?
Yes, I support the bonuses, but I also support a general raise off the general fund. I believe that we have to take care of our city employees, and so I support a raise as well as a bonus.
Tim?
Yes, I most certainly support that, but you know, they're not facilitating to the metro wave transit workers as well, and they were very important in this run as well. They were essential too. And so I believe that we should make sure that all city employees get their raise, and the wave transit workers do as well.
All right. Perry?
I think the raise is a good idea. I think it's kind of political, but I also think that the incentive program and suggestion box where the workers that bring up an idea that made it better for the city, get a few dollars for their input, and continued education to earn the wage, just like teachers, to make it more easy for the citizens to have a good experience when we go into city hall, better information, better informed employees, help better citizens. So I think the old method was pretty good. I think they had it in the 80s. I think that should be kind of the way it would go in the future. But yeah, the raise would be good for right now, but it needs to change.
Okay. Tony Tony?
Yes, I support the bonus, but also should, as a part of being impacted by the pandemic, we should find some funds to help the people who's also impacted by the pandemic. So I'm kind of in the middle, but I do support the bonus.
Okay, we're going to talk now about city surplus. The current administration has built a surplus of tens of millions of dollars over the last eight years. How do you balance the need for a rainy day fund with spending money collected from taxpayers now for current needs? And Herman, you'll go first.
Well, as I stated earlier, I think there needs to be a strategic plan to deal with some of the infrastructure problems throughout the entire city. So we do have a surplus, but I think the city council needs to come up with a strategic plan, because revenue sources must originate with the mayor's office, but we do need to have a plan to use another surplus, but we must use it wisely.
Cory?
Yes, we have a big surplus right now, and that's great, but we also have needs in our community, we have needs in our city. So we have to make sure that we come up with a plan together, the city council, the administration working together to create a change in our city and community.
All right. Tim?
Yes, we have a surplus, but if you look at where the surplus came, it came from reduction of force, and that's not a good route to get to a surplus, because that reduction of force has put us in these problems where we see grass going to the knees in parks, where we see gutters being filled with dirt and overflowing water during storms. So let's analyze this, create a great plan that can get these workers back on the force, but keep our money in our pockets.
Perry?
Yes, rainy day funds are important to keep it, keep that going. But yeah, the infrastructure needs to be on a plan that can't be stopped by insufficient funds. So we need to work more on easements and assessments of property, so we can keep the So we need to work more on easements and assessments of property, so we can keep the drainage in that going forward. And infrastructure upkeep by assessing more properties, and that's about all I got on that.
All right, Tony, Tony.
Yes, surplus, the surplus is good, but we have to keep working towards the community, putting funds in places that, that's needed.
Shamin.
It is important to focus on how we spend our money, surplus tax dollars. All of our money needs to be put into our communities as far as infrastructure, as far as our drainage, as far as our upkeep of our streets. It is important that we have good quality of life. And so we have to make sure that whatever funds that we have, that they're going back into our communities.
All right, the candidates left 30 seconds to answer this next question concerning Amtrak. The city of Mobile has promised $3 million to help bring Amtrak service back to the area. But Amtrak has reneged on a promise to conduct a study on what impact its use of tracks would have on commercial rail service. Should Mobile subsidize the return of Amtrak service? Cory Penn, you're first.
I think we need to look at that plan and make sure that we have an understanding and research. But I believe that we need Amtrak, I think it's a great transportation where we can go to different cities. But I think we also need to make sure that we have all the knowledge and understanding and the research to bring Amtrak back.
Okay, Tim.
Yes, transportation is my number one plight on my platform. So I definitely believe that we need to have Amtrak here. Had decisions never gone wrong in Montgomery dealing with Amtrak, we wouldn't be at this road today. So if we need to come together and work with Amtrak and go in this together to sponsor the study, they put 50 up, we put 50 up. We need to get it done because we're holding the people back.
Perry.
Yes, I'm definitely for rail of any type. Being an environmentalist, I think we've, we're long overdue for a rail system across the United States. For us to hold it up or to bocket that is just going backwards. Public transportation and rail is definitely the way to go.
All right, Tony, Tony.
Yeah, we definitely have to, it's a great idea, but we had to create that transparency first, and then we got to compromise. Create that transparency, transparency and compromise.
All right, Shamin.
We would definitely have to look at the plan, not being at that level yet in regards to being able to see what's going on. I would have to definitely do some research and check out the plan. And once again, do what's best for the citizens of Mobile.
And Herman.
I think Amtrak would provide a service to Mobile, and I think it will be something that will be useful and helpful to the city. And I think the survey should be, they should fill their obligation, and I think that's something that we should require of them.
Okay, our next topic, 45 seconds to answer this question concerning parks and rec in the city. Simple enough, does Mobile have enough parks? Are they properly equipped, maintained and managed? And Tim Hollis is first.
Well, I serve as the District One Citizens Parks and Rec Advisory Board member. And I can say that in District One, parks are on the rise. We have splash pads going up in Trinity Garden, we have a new splash pad at Tricentennial Park. But we need to go up to Wolf Ridge area, up to the Martha Road area where they have Megason Park. Megason Park is an undeveloped park that sits back in the woods off Wolf Ridge Road and University Road back there. So we need to invest in that area and bring in more revenue to that part of the community because they don't have anywhere to recreate.
All right, Perry Behrens, you're next.
Definitely parks and recreation need improvement. There's like a lot of good parks, but there's a whole lot that can be done. And I think we need to create more of a, an advisory board from citizens that are in that area to figure out exactly what to do, what, what they want their park to look like. I hear complaints from people that they take equipment away and don't bring it back and all this stuff, and they have nowhere to go. So we need more citizen input, but I think parks and recreation is doing a pretty good job. It's just that we need more citizen input that gets the air that will get the equipment back in the, in the park.
All right, Tony, Tony.
Yes, as a longtime citizen of Tomerville area, I grew up at the Figurs Park and the Aaron Park area. There's definitely a difference between now and then. So it's all on the rise, but I think we just got to keep investing, keep improving, things will get better.
All right, Shamin.
Parks and rakes, I believe that we're doing good. The, it needs some more improvement in regards to resources with programming. Events and all of that has become part of public works, they're all together and that is going amazing. But we want to make sure that every area, when it comes to park and recreation, is getting events. And we want to make sure that the programming for our youth and our seniors stay within our centers and are provided for. The resources are there to ensure that we have what we need for our citizens.
All right, thanks, Shamin. Herman, your thoughts on parks in the city?
Currently, we do not have equity with all of the communities in District One. We have wonderful parks in parts of District One, and we don't have any in other parts. Tricentennial Park, Figurs Park, Aaron's Park, Sage Avenue Park, they're wonderful location. The one in Trinity Garden, they're doing some expanding now. But we have other areas of the community, they should all have the same level of our parks and, of services from parks and recreation.
All right, Cory.
I actually live off the Wolf Ridge area, and a lot of times, I'm, I'm, right now I'm teaching my daughter how to ride a bike. And I have to teach her in the middle of the street because we have no sidewalks and we don't have a park, a, a developed park in that area. So we need to develop the Megason Park in that arena, so we can provide resources to the families that are in our communities.
All right, we're going to have a short question here. This is about your mayoral endorsement, who will you vote for for mayor and why? And Perry, you're first, 15 seconds again to answer this one.
I thought that was a right of privacy, I was in the box, what was the question again?
Who are you going to vote for for mayor and why?
Well, I will probably vote for Sandy Stimson. Primarily because I was at a county city meeting a couple of weeks ago, where he's going to have a, a meeting with other police mayors and various things to talk about policing the area.
Okay, we've got, you had your 15 seconds, Tony, Tony.
Um, I think I'm going to endorse Carlos Finley, I like his, his energy, his plan. We got a similar background, that's who I'm going to endorse.
Shamin.
I'm going to keep that to myself. I feel like it's a personal preference, and I wish each and every one of them much success.
Herman.
I'm running the city council District One, that's who I'm endorsing, I don't think that's a fair question, I think it's inappropriate.
All right, Cory.
We have some great candidates as, that's running for mayor, but I'm focused on District One, and so I'm endorsing Cory Penn.
All right, and Tim, you're last.
Well, the Fifth Amendment tells me I don't have to answer that question. And to leave a statement out there, whoever is elected as our next mayor, they will get work done with Tim Hollis.
All right.
I'd get 10 more seconds to say why I'm voting for Stimson.
Well, you had, it was 15 seconds and you had your 15 seconds, we're on to our next question now. This is a 30 second question, what is the best thing about the city of Mobile? And Perry, you are first.
Run that question up again.
What's the best thing about the city of Mobile?
Um, the best thing about the city of Mobile is oak trees, architecture, the possibilities of it becoming an international city and a great place to live. But the reality is, under the current conditions, that's not happening. The map of Mobile is a fantastic plan, and we need to work on the drainage issues first, get a foundation. So that the city can grow into the map of Mobile and an international attraction.
All right, Tim.
Well, Mobile is already an international attraction, we just went through COVID. We were on our way starting last year, it looked real good. Football, Mardi Gras, family oriented events, that's Mobile, that's what makes us up. Cookouts, people you don't even know, being able to spend time with new neighbors, new friends, that's what makes Mobile great.
All right, Cory.
I love Mobile, Mobile is a, a great city, we're the port city, we have Mardi Gras, we have the Senior Bowl. How many cities would love to have the Senior Bowl? We have a lot of great things happening in our city, and I want to keep it going forward. So as your councilman, I'm going to make sure that we grow our city.
Herman.
It's people and potential.
All right, Shamin.
The family atmosphere, just being in the city of Mobile is a southern place you, is, it's amazing. To be able to participate in all of the activities that we have, the seafood and all of those things. Mobile is amazing, and I look forward to being your next councilwoman for District One in the city of Mobile.
All right, Tony, Tony, what's the best thing about Mobile?
Well, Mobile has a lot of history, good and bad. The cost of living is fair, and it's a great place to raise kids and have a family, I'm enjoying it, I don't see anything wrong right now. We're just going to keep improving.
All right, the next question again is 30 seconds, similar question, it's the kind of the converse here. What's the worst thing right now about the city of Mobile? Tim, you're first.
Diversity and inclusion.
You're done.
Diversity and inclusion.
All right, Tim is done, Cory is next.
I think we have to figure out how to bring our young professionals back to our city, a lot of people are moving out, and that's an issue. And so we have to figure out and create a plan to bring our young people back to our city.
Herman.
We have issues and concerns like any other city, so I don't know of anything I would say that's the worst thing about Mobile. I think there are some things that we can improve upon.
Okay, Shamin.
There are some quality of life issues that need to be addressed, but we can do that. We, we have the resources, we have the people, Mobile is resilient. And so I wouldn't say there's a worse thing about Mobile, we just have to improve, and I believe that we're going to do that.
All right, Tony, Tony.
That's a tough question, but I'm going to go with, because it's personal to me, I think we need to improve the public education system, especially in District One.
Okay, and finally Perry.
Environmental, toxic air from smoke stacks, I shut, helped shut down GAF last run, which was the reason for running was to environmental issues. So toxic air, cleaner water, better sewage, it's not running into the river, and various things of that. That's kind of where my interests lie, and that's what I think would make Mobile better.
Okay, thanks Perry, this next one is just a 15 second answer, it's a short question, a simple one. Have you been vaccinated for COVID-19? If not, why have you not been vaccinated? Cory, you're first.
Yes, I have been vaccinated, actually, we had hosted two vaccination events at my site and in my community.
All right, Herman.
Yes, I have, and I would encourage all citizens to get vaccinated.
Shamin.
Yes.
Okay, Tony, Tony.
I have not.
Okay, and next is Perry.
Yes, but it's a selfless thing, so I would encourage other people to do it because you're protecting others. And not worry about the fact that it may have some harmful effects to yourself. If you're in the public, you need to think of others.
Okay, and finally, Tim.
As a military vet, I have to say yes, we shouldn't be scared of a shot. No reason to be afraid of a shot, people are dying every day. I have a cousin in the hospital right now in the ventilator, doesn't have a shot in their system. I have my shot, a lot of other family members have their shot, no symptoms.
Okay, thank you very much. 45 seconds to answer this next question concerning the Bayway Bridge project. What should the city's role be in the construction of a new Mobile River Bridge and Bayway? Herman, Thomas, you are first.
We should play a major role in the construction and development of that bridge, I think is important to this area for a lot of reasons, economic development, tourism. So we should play a major role.
Okay, Shamin.
We should be actively working to ensure that this project is done and done in the best efforts. And for the betterment of our city and our economic development.
Okay, Tony, Tony.
Yes, we got to work to complete that, the tour of rhythm and for the traffic, traffic gets crazy. And that will open up another avenue, I think it would be great to just go and get that completed now.
Okay, and Perry, you're next.
I'm definitely against that, I think it's a waste of money, considering the fact that we don't have the resources on the planet to keep maintaining all these cars. We need to start thinking of other transportation, whether it be trams, trains, rails, and leave it open for trucking as it is. But stop the cars, you know, slow them down so they get to the beach without having to drive vehicles.
Okay, Tim, you're next, your thoughts on the Bayway project?
I say Mobile should be involved, and as your city councilman, I will be involved. I feel that we should be in Washington DC lobbying, working to get grants, they have one already, it's a program. Secretary Buttigieg spearheads it, it's called the EMFR program, which is Infrastructure for Rebuilding America. And it's a grant program, money we don't have to pay back. So we need to look into that and see what we can do, because I just passed by the Bayway today, I pass by the Bayway every day, we all know what it looks like.
All right, Cory.
I'm for moving my city forward, and so with that being said, I think that the city of Mobile has to be a part of it. We have to look for grants and opportunities to make that happen. If we want our city to grow, that's one way to, to do it.
Okay, this next question is somewhat related, as we talk about the Bayway, this is a 30 second one. On an occupational tax, in the last 15 years, the city of Mobile has invested more than $200 million in economic development projects. Yet a majority of workers at Airbus, Ostell and the steel mills in Calvert live in Baldwin County. Baldwin is booming, some would say on the back of Mobile. Should there be a move for an occupational tax, much like the city of Birmingham has? And Shamin, you're first.
I would say that we need to ensure that when we are bringing companies into our city, that they are making sure that Mobileans are first when it comes to jobs. So it's important that we do whatever needs to be done to ensure that as we are bringing companies into our city, that it's benefiting the people in our city.
Okay, thank you, Tony, Tony.
Yes, for the occupational tax, we got to keep the jobs in Mobile for the people who live in Mobile. That's just how, that's just how I got to go.
All right, and Perry.
I'm against any kind of occupational tax for sure.
Okay, Tim, you're next.
In the state of Alabama, if you make money outside of the state of Alabama, Alabama wants its share. So in Mobile, if you live outside of Mobile and you come to Mobile and you're taking all the top paying jobs, you deserve to give us a share of that. And that occupational tax money can also be added to the penny tax money to support some funds around here.
Okay, Cory Penn.
Yes, perhaps, but local residence exemption. I think we have to look at the quality of life and make sure that we promote people living in the city of Mobile. It's a great city, and so when we talk to the companies, I think we have to let them know that Mobileans should be hired first, and that's what we should do.
And Herman Thomas.
People who live in Baldwin County have the advantage of all the resources that we pay for here in Mobile County. So I think it's only appropriate that they would be held responsible to assistance under the demands that we as citizens pay.
Okay, thank you very much, candidates, the next question here, 45 seconds to answer this one, it's a pretty broad question. What's the biggest issue facing the city of Mobile? Why is it the biggest issue and what can be done about it? Tony, Tony, you are first.
Well, to name something the biggest issue, that's, that's pretty tough, but I'm going to piggyback on what I said earlier, I think the public education system is, is broken. We got to have more resources involved into that for the kids, because I came through the public education system and I learned very little. I learned everything I know now outside of school, so I would say the public education system.
All right, Perry Behrens.
Definitely education is broken, been broken for a long time, but the biggest issue facing Mobile is the drainage. Getting on track with the grid system so that we can start the city now, moving in progress that will accomplish everything else. So that's the biggest issue facing us.
All right, thank you Perry, Tim.
Education is a big problem, but I'll leave that to the school board representatives and we can put our heads together. The biggest problem is broadband for all, we need broadband all throughout Mobile City, and as simple as that. Internet, ethernet are two different things separate from broadband. Broadband is what gives internet and ethernet its power to move fast, so we need to focus on broadband.
All right, thanks Tim, Cory.
I believe having safer streets, people, when they want to move into the city, that's the first thing they're looking at, they're looking at crime. And we have to make sure that we're taking and, and decreasing the crime in our community, decreasing the crime in our city. And so that's one issue, and the other is infrastructure. I think we have to work on that drain issue as well as making sure that we're taking care of some of the older parts in the city of Mobile.
All right, thank you Herman.
I think we have serious concerns with deals with infrastructure because of the flooding is primarily, and we have some residents who have lost their homes because of flooding. And I think we have to deal with some of their infrastructure issue. But also there's a, I guess a catch-all, the quality of life. There are some things we need to do to improve the quality of life, and it varies within the city. And so I think it's important that you look at the needs in the different parts of the city. There are some issues that are more important in certain sections than others, so you can't group it all together. You have to look at the individual areas and throughout the city of Mobile.
All right, and finally, Shamin.
Community and economic development, safer and cleaner streets. And making sure that we are utilizing our tax dollars and putting them back into our communities for our infrastructure. These are things that are issues that need to be addressed, and that I will be addressing as your councilwoman.
Okay, our next question, 45 seconds, it might be a little bleed over from that last question, but what's the biggest issue facing District One? Why is that the biggest issue and what can be done about it? And Tony, Tony, you're first on this one.
Um, well, first we have to deal with the teen violence, teen violence has been out of control recently. Ways to, to deal with that, we have to create opportunities for the teens, well, as children, as they become teens, to keep them active, it's just that simple. When they're not active, they're off in the streets, that's one thing. And like I said earlier, public, public education, I went to Booker T. Washington. earlier, public, public education. I went to Booker T. Washington, I learned very little. And I think we just got to work our zone with the mobile public education system.
Okay, Shamin?
Economic development opportunities, safer and cleaner streets. We, I can go outside and trash will still be out there for weeks. Good quality of life for everyone in District One, opportunities. That is what District One needs, and that's what I will be working for.
All right, thanks Shamin. Herman?
I think the best way to answer that question, you have to look at the various communities within District One. I think there are major concerns in the Trendy Garden area that may be a little bit different from the Tombville area. There are concerns in the Crichton Midtown area that may not be the same as the Botera going up Marfer Road area. So I think you have to look at to the, to the districts, and you have to talk to the people in District One and make sure you're addressing all of their concerns.
Corey?
Well, one of the things I started, of course, I'm canvassing, I'm knocking on doors in every neighborhood. And so you gotta hear for each community. Like you just take the Trend Guard community. We need to close the ditches in the Trend Guard community. You take the Tombville community. We need to take care of Highway 45. We need to clear it up. The litter, the black in the Tombville community, we need to clear it up. And you take the Botera community. We need sidewalks. So we have different needs in every community. But the goal is to talk to our residents by building a resilient community through listening, learning, and leveraging.
All right, Tim, what's the biggest issue in District One?
Biggest issue in District One is US Highway 45. It is the only US highway within these city limits that hasn't sought its care. Highway 98, Highway 90, they get their care. Highway 45, I'm 33 years old, it has looked the same way, and it continues to diminish day by day. That's the worst problem in District One.
All right, and finally Perry?
I'm sticking with drainage in, in my district because of oak blizzards or culverts fill up with, with oak leaves. It's expensive to remove them. That's out of my city budget. Is all I can do is pave over nasty old pipes that have been there for 150 years instead of being able to gut them and go. Without five corridors of main drain lines and the city set up on a grid system for drainage and work up progressively, no matter how much it is, start at the bottom of my district and go as far as my money will go. I think I get $3 million a year. So that's four years of improvements I can make. But if I don't have them drains looked into, it's too expensive. So that's my biggest issue is getting them, them five culverts in, and five main drains.
Okay, we're on to our next question. 30 seconds to answer this one. It's about tourism. The city supports Visit Mobile to the tune of about $2.7 million a year. With COVID threatening the future of the convention and meetings industry, what should the city's focus be when it comes to tourism? And Shamin, you go first.
With COVID in place, it's just making sure that we're keeping everyone safe when it comes to tourism. So making sure that we are wearing our masks, making sure that we're social distancing, making sure that events that are being held during this time, that health is put first when it comes to our tourists.
Okay, Herman, what should the city be doing when it comes to tourism?
Well, the city should be maintaining its efforts on tourism. Unfortunately, the COVID has changed everything in the world, and there's a new normal. But at some point, it's going to return to some, some similarity to what it was pre-COVID. And we must be ready then because tourism is a main economic boost for this community.
Okay, Corey?
Yes, I believe that we are in an interesting place because of COVID, but we have to be, have a plan and be prepared out of COVID. We're on a port city. We need things happening on our riverfront, right? We need restaurants. We need shopping areas. We have people come from all over for the Senior Bowl. We have NFL players coming. We have Mardi Gras. Other cities do not have these things, but we have to find a way to keep them. And I think building up our port area will do that.
Tim?
Well, yes, COVID is gonna pass eventually. One day it shall. But we definitely need to make sure we're doing something to bring more attractions on our riverfront. They say in Savannah, the only difference between our tourism and there is the fact that we have all industry on the riverfront. So let's focus on bringing entertainment and excitement to the riverfront, and let's get our music festival back because that was a big breaker for our city. We saw great revenue funds coming in during those times. When we lost Bay Fest, we lost a lot of money coming into this town. So we need to get our music festival back.
All right, thanks Tim. Perry?
I'm sticking with drainage. Now is a perfect time to go in and remove all these old drain pipes that have been complicated for 200 years and get our main drains centered so that we can just do laterals. Because as is, is all we're doing is if we open back up, we're just putting asphalt and pretty stuff. It's like putting a ball gown over dirty underwear. We need to get it cleaned up, all the main drains, everything underground, or nothing really will proceed without having conversations like this about, I want to fix my little neighborhood, I want to fix mine. No, we have to work on getting a grid and work together in the central businesses, district area to 65.
Okay.
From Spring Hail to government.
Time's up. Tony, Tony?
We have to keep our top attractions alive. Mardi Gras, Senior Bowl, et cetera. Have to keep them alive. Have to keep, that's one of, some of our top attractions. Mardi Gras, Senior Bowl, gotta follow all of the CDC guidelines to keep people safe. We gotta find a way to, you know, put these together, and we can do it.
Okay, we'll continue on talking about city support of industry and events, specifically this next question, 30 seconds to answer, on the Lending Tree Bowl. Two decades ago, when Mobile's bowl game began, the city paid $200,000 to support the game. Last year, the city spent almost $900,000 on the game that's now known as the Lending Tree Bowl. To what level should the city financially support this game? Herman, you're first.
Well, I think the Lending Tree Bowl is an asset to the city, but I think we have to do a kind of cost analysis to make sure we're not funded completely. Those games are wonderful. They bring in resources, tourism, they advertise the city. But the way it's done in most cities with corporate sponsorship, not with city funds.
All right, Corey Penn?
Yes, I think it's, we have to support different events, sports, similar to Gulf Coast Challenge. We have that, a major event. HBCUs come down to the city of Mobile, investing in, in events like that, and because they're bringing so much money in from different places and different cities.
Okay, Tim?
Well, there's nothing wrong with putting such an investment into a national spotlight. When, when the Lending Tree Bowl is on, it's all about Mobile. If you're watching ESPN, you see so much promotion from Visit Mobile, All About Mobile. So they're learning about our city at that time, and they're gaining interest in it. But the problem is, they need to invest into the venue that, that the bowl game is played in so that we can maintain a bowl game.
Okay, Perry, you're next.
I agree. Support the facility, put city money into our facility, but the corporates can sponsor it or it won't happen.
Okay, Tony, Tony?
Yes, we have to support it, but we, you know, we can't overdo it. Let's, let's use our funds wisely.
And Shamin, you're the last to answer about the Lending Tree Bowl.
I believe that we should support it in the best way we can, as well as make sure that we have sponsors in place. We can help with that with our city. We have many companies within our city, and I'm sure there are national companies that would love to be a part of the Lending Tree Bowl.
Okay, that was kind of a specific question. This is more general about city-supported events. What should the role of the city be financially in supporting events, whether they be entertainment events or sporting events, or something like the Moon Pie Drop, or Bay Fest, for example, that no longer exists? Corey Penn, you're first.
Yeah, we need to bring back festivals like Bay Fest. Bay Fest brought so much, so many people came from different states and cities. So I think it's a investment. That's how we have to look at it. We have to invest in these different events, and by investing in that, those events, we will see the money coming back into our city.
Tim?
It's clear to see that we need to invest. You look at it, we lost the Mobile Mystics, the Mobile Bay Bears, the Mobile Revelers, the Mobile Seagulls, the Mobile Admirals. We lost all of our fun events here in this city that made people excited to be a Mobilean, all because the city did not want to invest. We have to invest in entertainment, arts and culture. We are a city of arts and culture. Two of our logos are comedy and tragedy. We are a town of art, so let's invest in the arts.
Perry?
Same thing. We need to have a plan that the map of Mobile, I think, is perfectly fine if implemented, and everybody gets treated equal, and we owe on that plan. They spent a lot of money on that. A lot of people got excited, you know, so to start switching it up. It's too confusing. You need to stick on that plan and roll with it, and that will create these areas that will attract these different venues and set it up so other cities can see we're actually following the plan. That will draw new business because we're following a plan. As is, they look at it like this, God, you're doing a little here, a little there. You're not, you're not completing anything.
Okay, we hit our time limit. Tony, Tony?
Well, Mobile people are ready to have fun, right? So we have to keep investing in these entertainment things. Keep the money flowing, keep the entertainment, comedy, football, whatever it may be. Keep it going. Mobile people are ready to have fun.
Shamin?
We have to support these events, and we can do that in ways of getting grants, philanthropic funding, public-private partnerships, sustainable partnerships. There are many ways for us to invest into our community to make sure that we have the events and arts and culture that we need, because this will help us to also bring people back into the city of Mobile.
All right, and finally Herman on this topic.
The city should support entertainment-type events. They play a major role on the quality of life.
Okay, thank you very much. This next question, 30 seconds to answer this one. It's about the Gulf Quest Maritime Museum across the city, about $43 million to build it. And by all accounts, despite being a world-class facility, it has been a flop with the public. What should the city do with this property, keeping in mind that there are restrictions owing to the use of some federal transportation funds? And Tim Hollis, you're first.
We need to first look at those restrictions and see if there's a way for us to get out of it. Because if we're not gonna bring anything that's gonna attract citizens to the city, to that venue, or attract visitors to that venue, then we're wasting tax-paying dollars that could be going elsewhere to things like drainage.
All right, Perry?
Pretty much, who would have ever thought of putting something like that on the opposite side of the railroad tracks to begin with? I mean, it was a bad idea to start with. How it got as far as it did is ridiculous. What to do with it, it's anybody's guess.
Thank you. Tony, Tony?
I'm gonna say a bad investment. We have to know what the citizens is like. You're gonna spend that much money, and so you gotta know that people are gonna come out and spend that money to regenerate that, that money. So bad investment.
Shamin?
We have to do something with it. It's not working, obviously, so we need to get together, get a plan in place, and see what we can do. Because it has already been, it's already been built, so we don't want to waste any money. Let's get together, make a plan, and figure out what we can do to utilize that building.
Okay, Herman Thomas, your thoughts on Gulf Quest?
First of all, it's my understanding the city did not build Gulf Quest. But so with that in mind, I think the city is trying to make the use of, of the facility. So I think, again, it boils down to strategic planning.
And Corey?
I think we have to look at the restrictions. If we don't know the restrictions and all the different things that we're allowed to use the facility for, then we can't create and bring different entertainment or shops. So we have to know and look at the restrictions and create a strategic plan to, to see a major difference with the Gulf Quest Museum.
Okay, we'll stay with facilities downtown. This next one's another 30, 30-second answer, talking about the Civic Center. When Mayor Stimson came into office, he said the Mobile Civic Center was obsolete, couldn't be renovated or updated in a financially viable way, and was a huge drain on the city. The facility, however, remains open, but hosts few events outside of Mardi Gras balls. What do you see as the future of the Mobile Civic Center? Perry, you're first.
I see the future of it as being a good place to house research and development companies, contractors, education with Bishop State. I see it halfway houses for people transitioning out of metro into trades. I see all kinds of things it can be used for. Shelters in storms, you know, various things of this nature. So I see a lot of use for it. It's, it's a beautiful structure. Bring back concerts, anything, you know, it can be used for a lot of things, but those are my top three.
Okay, Tony, Tony, your thoughts on the Civic Center?
Well, we just gotta keep the attractions coming. I've been to many events at the Civic Center, comedy shows, concerts. It's a, it's a great place to house everybody. So it's a great place to meet. We just gotta keep the attractions coming and keep investing in it. Don't give up on it.
Okay, Shamin?
I believe the Civic Center will be a good place to have a work, live, play area, making sure that we utilize it in that kind of way. Entertainment is very important. I also have went to many events there. Bring back the, the events for schools and different things like that. It's important that we keep that building and we utilize it for the betterment of the city.
Herman, you're next.
I think that's a perfect, a perfect opportunity for the city where we can do public and private partnerships. It's, it's located in a, in a beautiful part of our city. The, the size of the, of the, of its footprint is, is massive. So, so I think it's an opportunity for public and private partnerships to do some things like they're doing in other cities in their downtown entertainment districts.
Corey?
Yeah, we have to upgrade it. You look at it, it's still there, and so for us to, to keep it, we need to upgrade it and then bring different events, concerts back, comedy shows. It's a great spot in the downtown community, and so if we upgrade it, I believe we will see change. We have to invest in our community and city.
Okay, Tim?
The Civic Center is still performing under analog technology. It's not digital. We need to make sure we bring it up to code in that regard. Then we need to look at some of the more state-of-the-art civic centers and event centers around the, the area that match the same population that we have, to see what we can do with it. Because we need to save that place. There's nothing wrong with, bring sports back to it.
All right, next question, also a facilities question. 30 seconds to answer this one about Lad Stadium. South Alabama and the Senior Bowl have moved out of Lad People's Stadium. The bowl game could be next. Almost all city high schools will soon be getting on-campus stadiums. What do you see for the future of Lad? Perry, you're first.
Same thing. It's a, it's a great place to have rock music, concerts, small sports, various things, little leagues, all kinds of things can be used there. I think it's a great place, especially with COVID, you know, where you can be out in the open. So yeah, I think it's still a very necessary part of the community.
All right, thanks Perry. Tim, you're next.
Well, as we all know, I was actively engaged in the protest of our city giving South Alabama that appropriation of funds that they were seeking, those $500,000 over 20 years' course, because something in that conversation was that Lad Stadium would be downsized. And I'm not for Lad Stadium being downsized because, as you heard tonight, there's a classic that's played there, and we want that classic to be played on neutral ground. Colleges are not coming into a town to go play at another college that's not theirs. So we need to make sure that that venue stays there in the city so that we can continue to have outside sporting events that are not related to South Alabama or Mobile County public school systems.
All right, thank you Corey.
I'm gonna say it again, we have to invest in us. It's a need. The Gulf Coast Challenge is an amazing sport, sporting event. We need more sporting events like the Gulf Coast Challenge. So to do that, we have to invest in us. So we have to upgrade the stadium.
All right, Herman, what should happen with Lad?
Lad Stadium is a jewel, and it's, it is an important part of the, of this city and specifically the Maysville community. And I think that's another opportunity for us to sit down as a city council and to do some strategic planning as relates to Lad Stadium. And I think it also is a perfect opportunity for a public and private partnership to expand that footprint.
Okay, Shamin?
I believe that we should keep Lad Stadium, bring back the Battle of the Bands events in that way, as well as continue to have events like the Gulf Coast Challenge. It is important that we keep that stadium because it is a historical place. Many games, many events have been held there. So let's invest in it and make sure that it is suitable for our citizens to utilize.
Okay, and finally Tony, Tony Wright?
Yeah, we got, we got to invest back in Lad. It's very important to the community, especially that community. It could be in good use. We just gotta keep the outside events coming, the concerts. It's a great place to have. Let's, let's just invest back into it.
Okay, our next question concerns helping schools. 30 seconds to answer this one, candidates. What, if any, should the role of the city be financial or otherwise in supporting the Mobile County Public School System? Tim, you're first.
It should have a great role. I come from a family of three generations of educators. So our city definitely needs to either create its own school board or get behind the school board that we have. Oftentimes, at the council meetings, you'll hear a councilor say that they have nothing to do with schools because they have representatives. I find that to be false. If it's in my district, I care about it.
All right, thank you. Corey Penn, you're next.
I'm gonna say it one more time, invest in us. It's important. The schools are in our district, so we have to find a way and figure out how to make that happen. Now, we understand that it's a school board, but guess what? That school is in my district, and I'm gonna make sure that they have the resources and anything else to be successful.
Herman?
The school board, they have work sessions where they come together and organize and talk about long-term plans. The city does that as well with the city council. What's What's wrong with the city council and the school board coming together and dealing with the issues facing of the citizens, our district, the students? And I think the city council and the school board should have meeting, planning sessions together to help each other.
All right, Shamin, what should the city's role be in dealing with education?
Shared responsibility. The citizens are the ones who are attending those schools. Therefore, it's important that we share that responsibility and ensure that the areas in which the schools are held, especially in District One, has the economic development around it so we can utilize the resources from the businesses that comes into our areas and put them back into our schools.
Tony, Tony?
This question is very personal to me. I'm working directly with the school board, absolutely. I went to all public schools, high school, middle school, elementary. We got to provide more resources for the teachers, raise their pay, provide more resources for the students to be able to... Education has grown since the beginning of time. Like, we had to grow with the time. Like, it's still back, still intellect. We got to do better with the school system.
Okay, and finally Perry?
I don't believe the public school system is working. I think it's an old antiquated model, and we need to change it to a more resilient model that works with COVID. I think moving out of buildings is a smart idea, getting them into more computers, tech, and teachers, and allow the teachers to teach instead of being mandated by the state to follow programs that don't educate students at all. It's broken. We need to bring education back to the hands of the educators. The school board doesn't listen to the educators, and that's why we got no child left behind and kids that don't think anymore.
Okay, thank you so much. Next question is about our litter situation in Mobile. 30 seconds to answer, candidates. What do you think about our litter problem in the city of Mobile? What would you do about it? Corey Penn, you're first.
We definitely have a little problem. One of the issues is, you know, we have to make sure that our businesses are taking care of their area, cleaning up behind themselves, picking up trash in the morning time. My daughter, once a month, goes around and clean different areas because she said that it's too much trash out here. And if a young person can see that, then we know that it's time for change. And I believe by creating programs to help our litter issue, we will see that change.
All right, Herman?
We have a major litter problem in Mobile, and the city should be treated just like we treat our homes. And we want our homes to be nice and clean, and our parents taught us that way. And we just need to encourage all the citizens, but we need to start the young people to understand the importance of cleanliness. It's just like they always say, cleanliness is next to godliness.
Shamin?
Working for the city of Mobile, I have organized community cleanup days and beautification days. I will continue to do that on a district level. Ever since my son was four years old, he's now nine, we have always went out and participated in beautification efforts. So I will make sure that we have a beautification effort for District One as well as assist with other efforts across the city of Mobile.
All right, thank you very much. Tony, Tony?
We must first educate the kids on environmental importance. We have to make sure we have trash cans accessible everywhere. Then we got to just encourage the citizens to use them.
Okay, Perry?
I think litter is more of a social problem. I think that it's a lashing out about not being a part of the city because they have no control in the city. They have no ownership to it. We need to make sewer and water boards and various boards citizen voted for. And I think that that will start getting ownership, and I think litter will start. Tricentennial Park, I was there, trash all over the place. And it's basically just people lashed out at not feeling ownership to the city. It's a social problem.
Okay, Tim, your thoughts on the litter situation?
I'll agree that it's a little bit of a social problem. I definitely have to echo that. But we can see that the problem is the reduction of force to the public works. Don't have anybody to go pick the trash up. So what's going on now is the city of Mobile has it where you can call somebody, and I know her name, and anybody who wants to know who it is, get in touch with me because you can get a DBE contract, and that's a disadvantaged business enterprise contract to go out and pick up trash. Our mayor is actually supporting that right now.
Okay, thanks so much. We are done with our questions. We're moving on now to our closing statements. We drew numbers at the beginning to determine the order of the closing statements. Each candidate will have up to one minute to make their closing remarks. And Shamin Thompson, you are first.
As a lifetime resident of District One, I have lived, worked, and served in District One ever since I was a young girl. It is important to me that the issues, the quality of life issues, be addressed. I grew up with my grandmother, Ms. Florida Fortune, and my cousin Reverend Wesley James, and I have always been in public service. This isn't different. I am a public servant. I will work for you. I will focus on the issues that matters to you. Vote Shamin Fortune Thompson, August the 24th. A vote for me is a vote for you and a voice for the people.
Okay, thank you so much. Our next candidate is Corey Penn.
My whole life has been centered around District One. It started early at YWCA, went to Holloway, Scarborough Middle School, and a graduate of John the Yellow Floor. My daughter and son attend school in District One. I love District One, and I care about District One. I'm a director at the Boys and Girls Club located in District One and a pastor at Right Way Christian Center located in District One. I want us to imagine. I want to see our community different. But we're not going to stop at imagining. We're going to move to igniting. Igniting those ideas by creating programs and resources for our community. And then we're going to move to inspiring the generation. So imagine, ignite, and inspire. I'm District One, you're District One, we're District One. On August the 24th, vote Corey Penn for Mobile City Council, District One.
All right, thank you so much. Tony, Tony Wright?
I want to say this. God kind of placed this on my heart. With all these people up here, regardless of the election, I think it's important that we all work together after this. Like, whoever wins, whoever ends the season, that's cool. Let's all work together because think about all the damage we can do with Tim's passion, with Corey's determination, with Mr. Thomas' connection and experience, Mr. Perry's experience, and Shamin's intellect, and my charm. We can do so much damage in this community and be a force together. So I have reached out to all the candidates to work together. You know, thanks, and let's do it just the right way.
All right, thank you so much. Tony, Tony. Perry, Barron's, you are next.
Closing statement, I'm sticking with the map of Mobile as a plan, and drainage is a start to making that plan a reality. The other issues, I've worked in education and various things of that. And if I don't know everything, I go to the people that do know what they're talking about in that field. And when you find those people, you get the answers to the situation. So when you present it to the board, you'll come in with the truth of those that are affected and those that have a solution. I'm working on presenting solutions based on those that are in the field that are affected by bad solutions currently.
Thank you so much. Herman Thomas?
Mobile is a great city. District One is a wonderful district. I enjoyed living in my community. I want to continue to serve my community and this city. And I request your support and your vote on August 24th. Herman Thomas, District One. Thank you.
All right, and finally, Tim Hollis?
First, I'd like to thank you for a job well done, Mr. Moderator. And I'd like to thank all the bodies that made this happen because in the last election, we didn't have events like this. So I'm glad to see that someone is finally paying attention to the city council races because this is important. We live in a strong council, weak mayor form of government. So we should be paying attention to the strength of our government. So it's good for us to be here. I won't beat up on a horse tonight. All I'll tell the people is to go to thforthepeople.us because it is all about us. All of these issues that I spoke to tonight, I spoke to them fluently. Why? Because I've been on the scene advocating and fighting for the people. People will say that they would do this job for free. Well, I've been doing this job for free since 2015.
All right, thank you so much for your closing statements. Candidates, thank you so much for being here tonight and for all your great answers to the questions pertaining both to District One and to the city of Mobile. I want to thank Mobile United and the League of Women Voters for sponsoring tonight's city council forum. And for you watching online at wkrG.com and on Facebook. A reminder tomorrow at this same timeframe, 7 o'clock to about 8:30, we will have the six candidates for District Two, and don't forget to vote on August 24th.